Honorable Dr. Roosevelt Skerritt, Prime Minister and Minister for Investment and Governance and Parliamentary Representative for the Vekas constituency. Honorable Greta Roberts, Minister for Culture, Youth, Sports and Community Development. Other members of Cabinet. Mr. Lucien Blackmore, Permanent Secretary, Minister of Sports, Culture and Community Development. Other permanent secretaries. Local Government Commissioner, Mr. Glenroy Toussaint. Pastor Jerry Laura. Justice of the Peace, Mrs. Theresa Royer. New members of the Vekas Village Council. Past members of the Vekas Village Council. Staff of the Local Government and Community Development. Clerk of the Vekas Village Council, Ms. Nola Valerie. Ms. Gina Royer and Ms. Melissa Didier. Neighbouring councils, other invited guests. Members of the media, ladies and gentlemen. A pleasant good afternoon and welcome to the 29th inaugural meeting of the Vekas Village Council. Today, you are about to witness eight capable men and women taking their oath of office as they begin their journey of a three-year term of office to the community. Five of whom you elected at the polls when you exercised your democratic rights and three were nominated by the Honorable Minister for Culture, Youth, Sports and Community Development to complete the team. I want to first congratulate these four men and four women for taking up the mantle to lead this community for the next three years and to thank you, the residents, for supporting them thus far. I also want to solicit the support of you, the residents of Vekas, to work with your council whenever you are called upon, whether to engage in voluntary service, to participate in fundraising activities or pay in your house rates. Remember that development of your beloved community requires a team effort which involves the council and you, the residents. Councillors, you have been charged with the good governance of your community and this responsibility must not be taken lightly. It will require hard work and dedication on your part. I urge you to involve the community at all stages of planning as you prioritize the needs of this community and move forward. You will be faced with numerous challenges, but I urge you to remain focused as you strive to work for the development of your beloved community. I also urge you, councillors, to set your differences aside and work together for the good of your community. I must say that in this community, you are privileged to have the Honorable Prime Minister as your parliamentary representative and I am sure that he will continue to give the council his support as he has done in the past. I wish your council all the best as you strive to achieve your goals as individuals and as a team. Ladies and gentlemen, I do hope that each and every one of you, especially our visitors, will have an enjoyable time here with us in the lovely community of Vekas. Once again, welcome. At this time, I would like to invite Mrs. Theresa Royer, the Justice of the Peace, to administer the oath. I would also like to invite the Honorable Minister for Culture, Youth, Sports and Community Development, Ms. Greta Roberts, to present the credentials.
I'll call upon Valentin Joseph. I, Valentin Joseph,
I, Valentin Joseph,
do swear
Do swear.
that I will well and faithfully
That I will well and faithfully
discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
of a member of the village council
Member of the village council.
of Vekas.
Of Vekas.
So help me God. Kuresh Williams. I, Kuresh Williams,
I, Kuresh Williams,
do affirm
Do affirm.
that I will well and faithfully
That I will well and faithfully
discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
of a member
Of a member.
of the village council
Of the village council.
of Vekas. So I do affirm. Congratulations. Next in line is Janelle Susarina Brumant. I, Janelle Susarina Brumant,
I, Janelle Susarina Brumant,
do swear
Do swear.
that I will well and faithfully
That I will well and faithfully
discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
of a member of the village council
Of a member of the village council.
of Vekas.
Of Vekas.
So help me God. Congratulations, Janelle. Yolan John Jewels. I, Yolan John Jewels,
I, Yolan John Jewels,
do affirm
Do affirm.
that I will well and faithfully
That I will well and faithfully
discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
of a member
Of a member.
of the village council
Of the village council.
of Vekas.
Of Vekas.
I do affirm.
I do affirm.
Congratulations. Joseph R. Libler. I, Joseph Libler,
I, Joseph Libler,
do swear
Do swear.
that I will well and faithfully
That I will well and faithfully
discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
of a member
Of a member.
of the village council
Of the village council.
of Vekas.
of Vekas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Heather Andre Didier. I, Heather Andre Didier,
I, Heather Andre Didier,
do affirm
Do affirm.
that I will well and faithfully
That I will well and faithfully
discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
of a member of the village council
Of a member of the village council.
of Vekas.
of Vekas.
I do affirm.
I do affirm.
Shuma Francis. Shuma Francis Lee. I, Shuma Francis Lee,
I, Shuma Francis Lee,
do swear
Do swear.
that I will well and faithfully
That I will well and faithfully
discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
of a member
Of a member.
of the village council
Of the village council.
of Vekas.
of Vekas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Shuma Francis Lee. Christopher Elizé. I, Christopher Elizé,
I, Christopher Elizé,
do affirm
Do affirm.
that I will well and faithfully
That I will well and faithfully
discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
of a member
Of a member.
of the village council
Of the village council.
of Vekas.
of Vekas.
So I do affirm.
So I do affirm.
Congratulations, Mrs. Elizé. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Royer, for administering the oath and thank you, Honorable Roberts, for presenting the credentials. Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you your new council who will serve you for the next three years, members of the Vekas Village Council. Ladies and gentlemen, it gives me great pleasure to present to you the new chairman for the Vekas Village Council as Mr. Valentin Junior Joseph. Since Mr. Joseph was the outgoing chairman and he is also the incoming chairman, I will invite him to the podium to address him.
Let me take this opportunity to thank the good Lord for his mercies and his blessings as I could not have come this far if the good Lord had not been holding my hand every step of the way. For this, I am immensely grateful. This moment takes me back when I was standing here being inaugurated as a newly-elected chairman of the Vekas Village Council with no knowledge and experience in this field. Nevertheless, with hard work and determination, I knew that there was potential to do astonishing things. It would be remiss of me to not acknowledge and thank you the villagers. I am... Thank you, the villagers. I am both humble and honoured that you have placed your confidence and support in me for this. I say, gracias, merci and thank you. Fast forward three years later, I can stand here and reflect on numerous things we endeavoured to do and have done for the people and the community by extension. Firstly, it was a pleasure to be stuck upon every child at the Brownish-Patricia Scotland Primary School, a school should be before the beginning of the year, and also to make a monthly contribution towards the salary of an deserving educator because it is a firm belief of mine that an investment in knowledge pays the best interest. We would take intrinsic pride and diligently groom in the Brownish-Patricia Scotland Yard. Astonishing sense of community patriotism would fill us while cutting down trees, cleaning drains and calvert and cleaning abandoned lots and feeder routes as a means of beautification and best control within our whatever developing community. Throughout my term, we were able to identify persons who needed pathways to the homes and walls to prevent landslides and erosion. With the help of the Prime Minister and the Honorable Dr. Roosevelt Skerritt, Mr. Chris Walter, Mr. Miguel Masicot and all the villagers who assisted, we were able to accomplish several projects within our community to numerous to identify the list. Every elder seventy and over was given gifts of pre-celebration of the birthday, one on behalf of the council and the other personally from myself. Speaking of the elders, the village council had made tremendous contribution towards the greater home and with intent to continue to do so. The journey of a thousand miles began with one single step. Thus, let's not forget that it was a point of duty for us to host and deliver a monthly meal to every less fortunate. We did a lot. However, there is still more to accomplish to improve the community we hold there. The wheels are already in motion towards the rehabilitation of Opak Beach and these wheels will continue to turn as we work together to complete the wars and fencing... projects. We also have plans for O2 Beach. We hope to provide ease access by improving the roads and with your help, we will make this endeavour a reality. Consequently, this will pave the way for the beach beautification project where the young people can showcase creativity as... creativity and find ways to make our beach more inviting and attractive. My dear villagers, we cannot ignore the presence of numerous dilapidated houses and abandoned lots that need urgent attention and we would like to collaborate with the Prime Minister and owners to see how we can put these lots to ultimate use and what the buildings can transform. As he once said, and I quote, "The idea isn't to find yourself another environment for tomorrow, but to be constantly creating the environment and community you want for yourself." End quote. Today, therefore, I will continue to make it our duty and maintain the year for the Brownish-Patricia Scotland Primary School, ensuring the grass always groomed and the students always have an environment to play, learn and grow. Villagers, my record and simplicity is passionate, self-driven advocacy on behalf of all of us. I am elected again as chairman. Therefore, I will continue to be the voice of the people, of my community and the country by extension. And I can tell you, the possibilities are endless. Every project we have started with your support, we will continue. We will continue to always lend the listening ear and a hand simply because we... simply because we care about your interests, your voice and your goals. We will continue to feed the less fortunate. We will continue cutting down trees, cleaning drains, blocking potholes and unblocking drains and calvert. We continue... we will continue to give the elders who have paved the way for all of us. I will continue to give every school child should be before the school year. I will continue visiting the elders to seek their consent. I will continue to help the school children here and abroad. I will continue to provide my resources towards the council as well contribution to the elders whom I provide with cylinders and monies for health, life check-up, financial support and schools donation by stipend which I have never used. This one is for the Prime Minister. Mr. Prime Minister, don't you think I deserve a ministry in the cabinet? I would like to say special thank you to the Prime Minister for his support, devotion and significant contribution to his community. Once you are with us, we will not fail, but we will keep rising higher and higher. I would like... I would like to also thank the staff of the council for their support. In closing, this committee is ours so we should share our ideas and collaboration to make them a reality because there is so much to do which will be accomplished in due time. The Vekas community is vibrant so let's work on bringing back our sporting activities and culture for unity and community development. As I speak of community development, I want to send a message to our youth studying abroad. With the support we can put in place a programme upon the return providing voluntary service to assist the children of our community in shaping and grooming them in education and other activities which we will help them face the diverse world we are living in. Now that I am more experienced working with me, will lead to continuance, prosperity, transparency and accountability. Once again, I say thank you.
Honorable Dr. Roosevelt Skerritt, Prime Minister and Minister for Investment and Governance and Parliamentary Representative for the Vekas constituency. Other honourable members of Cabinet. Local Government Commissioner, Mr. Glenroy Toussaint. Pastor Jerry Laura. Justice of the Peace, Mrs. Theresa Royer. New members of the Vekas Village Council. Former members of the Vekas Village Council. Staff of the Division of Local Government and Community Development. Clerk of the Village Council. Ms. Nola Valerie. Ms. Gina Royer and Ms. Melissa Didier. Neighbouring councils, other invited guests, members of the media. Ladies and gentlemen, a blessed afternoon to you all. I am extremely delighted to address you on this 29th inauguration ceremony of the Vekas Village Council. I wish to extend my performed gratitude to those persons who served on the previous council over the past three years. Your sacrifice and contribution towards your community's development is deeply appreciated. I wish also to congratulate the new council for taking up the mantle to serve the community of Vekas. You are being sworn in at a critical time where the involvement of people at the grassroots level is of paramount importance to achieving the goal of a new and dynamic Dominica. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, it is no secret that the institution of local government has added significant value to the programme of central government in reaching the people at a community level. It is through the council that many of government's social programmes are channeled. It is well established that council is a strategic vehicle for community empowerment and transformation. I am very impressed with the information that I have received on the many initiatives that have helped to improve the quality of life of the residents of Vekas. The Slave Party government will go down in history as the first government to have provided councils with substantial amounts of funds for the implementation of community-based social and economic programmes. Mention must be made, therefore, of the National Employment Programme, for example, which has helped change the landscape of the community and many other communities across Dominica. Our Housing Assistance Programme, the School Transportation Initiative, the non-contributory pension allowance which now targets sixty-five-year-olds to neighbour few have all contributed to an improvement in the standard of living of our people, especially the most vulnerable ones among us. The Vekas Village Council has been the medium through which these programmes have been channeled and implemented. On this note, I wish to commend the past councillors for their active engagement in the process and I urge our new councillors to continue this significant partnership with central government. Rest assured, my dear councillors, government will spare no effort to work with you in the improvement of the quality of life of the people of this community. I am particularly elated that your council has worked with your parliamentary representative to identify, develop and implement a number of community-based projects. I was at the Roseau City Council inauguration ceremony and I told the people in Roseau that they are blessed to have had three parliamentary representatives to work with them, considering in some communities you only have one. But then, Vekas is even more blessed because you have the one parliamentary representative. So consider yourselves blessed. I have been informed of the gratitude of many residents who benefited from these initiatives. So residents of Vekas, these initiatives in collaboration with your parliamentary representative and the council are all part of government's thrust to bring social and economic development to the people who need them and ultimately to make things better for you, the people whom we were called to serve. There is a wide-held belief that effective monitoring is closely associated with prudent management of resources. One of the mandates of the council is to ensure a greater level of transparency and accountability in the execution of your various projects and programmes. It is your responsibility as a council to take every step in being accountable for the use of the funds provided by the various ministries and agencies. While you must not aim to make shortcuts and compromise the quality of your work output, please ensure that you take good care of the tools and equipment in your care and above all, ensure that you properly account for every dollar spent. Residents of Vekas, it is happening to see so many of you who have turned out in solidarity and support of your new council. There is no doubt that the eight people who now form your council have come forward because of their love and interest for the community. But I also believe that they have come forward because of the firm belief in a higher idea of service above and beyond self. Your councillors have offered themselves to serve you, the people. So it is only fair that you work with them, support their programmes and activities and most importantly, I just want to add, pay the much-needed house rates because it is the council's main source of revenue and it is necessary for the continued growth and development of the community. Councillors, I urge you to commit yourself to the task at hand. Take your position seriously. You are the mini-government of the community. Be the change that you wish to see and whatever decision you may make, make it in the best interest of the community. I encourage you to build on what the past council has achieved and remain true to the oath that you just took. I am looking forward to your leadership in this regard. Let me remind you that we are only a few weeks away from the 2023 Atlantic hurricane season. I wish to encourage everyone to take the necessary precautionary measures to ensure that you are in a state of readiness in the unlikely event of the impact. I also wish to encourage you as the council to spearhead the efforts in organising the Community Disaster Management Programme by ensuring that the disaster committee is active and that roles are clearly defined. The Office of Disaster Management and the Division of Local Government are available to assist you in whatever way possible. Before I end, I also wish to take this opportunity to encourage you to help us in our fight against NCDs, the increase in diabetes, hypertension, stroke and cancer which are plaguing our community at this time. As a council, you too can help to provide leadership and take urgent action within your community for its prevention and control. As you walk in the community, encourage others to eat healthy, to grow what they eat and as much as possible engage in some form of physical activity. Make use of your playing fields, any open spaces that you may have and work towards living healthy lifestyles. In closing, let me once again congratulate all of you and wish you a successful term of office. I give you the assurance that my ministry will support your initiatives and the programmes that you are deciding to do. The Division of Local Government is readily available to work with you and I trust that you will continue to work with the division and other divisions within the Ministry of Culture, Youth, Sports and Community Development. Once again, congratulations and to all of you, may God bless you and may God bless your beautiful lives.
I want first of all to congratulate the chairman on his reelection as chairman for a second term for the Vekas Village Council. And to congratulate all of the members, the current councillors. We have in this council tremendous reservoir of experience and youthfulness and I have no doubt that the council will deliver to the residents of the village. I have every confidence that they will work together to ensure that it can provide leadership and representation to all of us. to ensure that it can provide leadership and representation to all of us who call this beautiful village our home. This is a democracy, people voted for who they wanted to vote for, and all of us have to respect the results of the elections. And to recognize that we have a council that has been properly instituted in accordance with the laws of the Commonwealth of Dominica. What is left for the councilors is for them to work together to deliver. I want to say to the council that you have my absolute support and collaboration to ensure that we can continue to improve the lives and the livelihoods of the residents of this most wonderful village. And I want to share with you some things which I would like for you to partner with me as the par rep on. As you know, one of my greatest preoccupations at this time is my strong advocacy in regards to chronic non-comical diseases in our country. This is a major threat to our very existence as a country and is not unique to only Dominica. It is a regional and global phenomenon. Diabetes, hypertension, are major causes of deaths in our country. It costs the government millions of dollars to treat people who have those illnesses. And as you know, in Dominica, the majority of us have free access to medical care. And it is free to those who receive it, but the treasury must pay for it. I recall a few years ago, I increased the budget of the Ministry of Health and it's a recurrent increase, does not capital increase, a recurring increase, by five million dollars, that is just for pharmaceuticals. And that five million dollars was to purchase drugs associated with the treatment of CNCDs. The reality is, those who have it, there is no reason to be shameful about having it. They wish to manage it and to ensure that we can live productive lives. And those who of us who do not have it, there are ways of us not contracting CNCDs. And so, there'll be a number of programs that we will initiate in the months, weeks, and months ahead, and I would like to collaborate with the village council and indeed the entire community I intend to involve. So we'll be engaging in exercise programs, health and wellness programs. We will be speaking about nutrition and what are the best dietary combinations that we need to consume to manage and to prevent ourselves from getting this. And we're bringing nutritionists, medical doctors to come to the community to speak to the whole village about this. We will be walking the streets of Vekas to exercise, we'll go to the playing fields and walk around to exercise. We'll go to the beach and soak ourselves and to engage in that kind of physical activity. Because oftentimes we focus on the roads and bridges and so on. But in this term, I want to focus more on the human aspect of development and human aspect of council. So that's one thing. We have to encourage Mister Chairman and councilors, the back-up gardening programs in the village. Then, we can grow most of what we eat. We have fertile soil, we have the best soil in the country. We have the thickest topsoil you can find anywhere in Dominica. And the makeup of the soil is rich, and so we can grow anything here in this village. And therefore, we have to encourage ourselves to grow much of what we eat. It saves us money and it makes us healthier. Going to the supermarkets and buying these fancy looking boxes of juices is fine, but these are not healthy juices. They have no vitamin C, no matter how big they write the vitamin C for you, there's no vitamin C in this juice. Because it's really sugar, coloring, and water. We have to go to the days when we went in our backyard and picked a hand, a hand of cherries, blended it, and made juice. It cannot be fashionable that what we consider to be snacks are what are imported things that come in a plastic bag or in a box with high salt, high sugar. And the challenge we have these days in the Caribbean and Dominica included is that we are seeing a number of schoolchildren who are contracting diabetes because of obesity. I am urging the country to look and appreciate the wisdom in what I'm saying and to take heed of it because this is wreaking havoc in our society and in our country and in the world, CNCDs. So I want us to pay attention to this, so we'll be having, I'll sit with you so that we can collaborate on this. What you can do on behalf of the community will leave it to you and that which you think you can't do, the par rep will take charge of it, but it's a community effort. And if you can take all of what I have to do, then great, I'll be happy about that, please. But we need to collaborate on this. I will be meeting all of the principals of the primary schools in my constituency, hopefully next week. Currently, the dollar which students pay for the school feeding program, I pay for all the students in my constituency as par rep. From next month, from next month, I will be taking over the financing of the entire school feeding program in the constituency. But under one condition, that the meals that they prepare for the students will have to be approved by a nutritionist and they must follow that meal plan. And I want all of what the children consume to come from the farmers of this constituency. So there's, so there's no need to buy any red beans that comes from overseas. You can get, you can buy a pound of red beans from overseas and turn it into pounds produced locally. And we will charge people to, get people to plant those things, plant vegetables. So we'll buy the fish from the fishermen here, the pork from the pork people here, the chicken from the chicken poultry farmers, the eggs from you, the vegetables from you, so that we can have a healthy meal every single school day for the children of this constituency. The other thing I would like you to collaborate, it's okay, the child is fine, that's fine. Yeah, we must remember to ourselves to his cycles, you know, let the children come unto me, you know. That's, it's fine. The other program I would like you to join forces with me, we have a new health center and we have an old health center. The old health center is going to be retrofitted and turned into a modern, part of it will be used, because it's big enough, will be transformed into a modern kitchen with all of the elements you will find in a modern kitchen. That will, that way we will prepare meals for the senior citizens in our village in the entire constituency and deliver to them at the home. The retrofitting of this building will commence within the next two weeks. There'll be breaking down certain walls and opening up a space. And I understand that the women's club would like a portion of the building, so we'll give the women's club a portion, Miss Mona Sharpe, Lisa LeBlanc, Stella LeBlanc, others. The Social League wants a space, so we'll allow them to use this. But the majority of the building will be used to construct a modern kitchen for the community. The other things I would like you to join us in is the construction of a playground for the children, the schoolchildren, but the entire community. Work on this, I've spoken to the principal, work on this. We'll begin in the next couple of weeks, the preparation of the site. We have all of the components for the playground on island. So there'll be one in Tivo, one in Vekas, and one in Pendle. In Vekas, and we're searching for space in Pendle, but in Vekas, we have identified a space and we will speak to you about this as a council. The construction of a public swimming pool for the enjoyment of the young and old in the constituency. And of course, as you know, a contract has been signed for the construction of a multipurpose court for the village and we will see the lighting of the Vekas playing field as well. One of the things we have to address in the village, and oh, by the way, for those of you who are coming for the first time, you are in the Alexis Williams Multipurpose Resource Center. We will place on the outside the appropriate signage and inside a nice photograph of our former par rep, Alexis Williams, will be inside a write-up on his contribution to the community. So this is the Alexis Williams Resource Center. And I know all of the parlors are going to tell me afterwards, Gary, where can I get one like that? I see they're writing, you know, and taking pictures. But one of the things, and we hate talking among ourselves, I don't know why all these strangers there, you know, we need more people in the village. And the only way you can get more people in the village is by having more children in the village. If we, and I see, I see Mary Sue and Michael watching me and others watching me and so on. If we, if we don't watch it in the village, we'll be end up closing the school because we will not have enough children for the school. Because a school only exists if there are students. And we now have at the Vekas, at the Barren Scotland Primary School, multi-grade. The grades three and five, four and five are together. And they have, they have a dozen students in the classroom, three and four and five together and hardly a dozen students. You know, I understand one or two children go to Portsmouth, but that, that's, those who go to Portsmouth is really, you can count them on my, on my, on my, on one hand. So we have to address this. And so, there's a program I'm working on as par rep that I will come back, some incentives I'll be presenting. That I will come back to present to you as to how I believe that we can increase the population in the community. And, and part of this, part of this, and the chairman mentioned this, and just to say to you, we have in fact started this, is that the government of Dominica will be acquiring, if people have lots of abandoned, you better build on it or use it for commercial purposes. Otherwise, the government of Dominica will acquire it in the public's interest so that we can build homes and our people who were renting in Portsmouth and Roseau are prepared to come back. And so we'll be constructing homes and commercial spaces and abandoned lots in the village. So either you make use of it or it will be acquired in the public's interest so that we do not have abandoned lots there and bringing rodents and other, other vectors into the community. And so I'm happy to be here this afternoon with you this evening. I don't want to, a number of other things I can talk about. Designs have started, for example, for a new police station and courthouse and that will be presented to us in the village at some point, once it is completed, the first draft. There are a number of things that we're working on in the community. A number of roads that will be cut from Bassaban to Quota, from Bassaban to Diamond. The farmers have told me of Bellevue and the cotton roads to create access to Lime Zed, that'll be done. Mark LeBlanc's family have given us approval to build the road from Mabajana to Amber. So we'll be constructing those roads and opening up those roads to create, to create access to agriculture and housing residential lots and improve the complete ambiance of the community. So a number of things I will be talking about. But my preoccupation in this term as a par rep is about the welfare and well-being of the persons, the individuals. Because even if we build homes, that we're building, and we continue building homes, that's not, that's not issue. We have some of the best roads in the entire Caribbean in that constituency. We have these modern facilities. Our school is in top condition. Right? If we're not healthy and well, we will not be able to enjoy these things. And so I want you to, to join because sometimes we as constituents, as Dominicans, if we don't see something, we figure nothing is happening. You understand? But these things will cost money, but it's money that is necessary. And when I spoke a few weeks ago to some residents at another forum, I indicated to all of you, another program I'll be putting in place is a compulsory medical examination. Every man forty years and over in this constituency, the par rep will pay to take you to see the doctor, to check your prostate and to go comprehensive medical check. And, and, and we will expose the women to pap smear and mammogram tests to ensure that if there is something wrong, we can capture it early and provide you with the clinical interventions so that you can live with us for many, many decades to come. And we have, we started this program in twenty-twenty, it was thrown off because of COVID. Where I brought a number of constituents to town and who were subjected to medical doctors. I paid for the medical visit, I paid for the bus to take them home, take them to town. I paid for the medication, I paid for all of the tests for them. And it made a huge difference in the lives of all of those persons who participate in this program. That program is open to everybody who wants to be part of it. And so I want to say to us, it's important. It's important that we do it. And so that is my preoccupation now. And, and I want you to understand and to understand the importance of this. Because, because of environmental and the, and the quality of the products and the quality of our diet, we don't consume enough vegetables and fruits. We're getting, we are subjecting ourselves to more illnesses. And so it's important for us to have regular medical examinations. And we'll bring in doctors here to the constituency so we can see more people in a day than otherwise. But there'll be a combination of bringing you to town and also bringing doctors here. All of this program will be paid for by the par rep on behalf of all of us. All of this program will be paid for by the parlor on behalf of all the residents in this constituency. So I want to thank you for this. Finally, I want to say a huge thank you to all of you who are part of the National Employment Program, the NIP program. First, those who are engaged in the beautification arm of the program, you are doing a fantastic job. You know, when you drive from Blenheim to Pendleton, though Blenheim and Teplin is not part of my constituency, but we have adopted that part of the country. You know, it is a really amazing drive. We all need to play our part in the cleanliness and the beautification of our village. That's what Vekas has always been known for, our cleanliness and our beautification. We all planted flowers. We all cleaned our drains. We all cleaned our yards. We have to maintain that legacy in our community. And so we'll be engaging the community in a tidy village, a tidy home competition, a bucket garden competition, and there'll be some exciting prizes. So start planting flowers now and start your bucket garden now. Don't rush when you hear the prizes come and try to do something. We will know if you will just try to get a prize rather than really doing it. So this is some of the things that we'll be doing. That means so much for us and going forward and so forth. So I want to thank you, congratulations again, Mr. Chairman and councillors. Rest assured, you have my absolute, absolute collaboration and cooperation. And one thing I will say about all of the councillors who are here today, all of them, whenever there is a community activity, self-help, committed service, all of them there, they are part of this exercise. And that's important. That's important. And, and so there's, that's why I believe that the voters of this village voted you in to represent them. So I am sure that if you work together with me, the villagers won't say council back after here. They will say, well, that's the best council we have ever seen in the history of village council in the Vekas. And I believe it can happen and I believe it will happen with all of our collaboration and efforts and so forth. I want to thank all of you, my dear residents, and to thank you for your continued support and your continued prayers and for keeping this village to be such a wonderful place. But the sky is the limit for us. All we need is for us to work together. Work together. And there are many things that we have, we can work together with and work together on. In the three years, that will be the council, council, you have three years. We have a lot to do in three years, a lot we can do in three years. Thank you. God bless you.
We do have a plaque here to present to a special lady. It reads, Vekas Village Council Recognition Award, presented to, I'll leave this name a little bit, for your outstanding community service, presented April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Now let me tell you a little bit about this person. She's a community person. She's a lovely lady. She's with everyone. She's a mother to everyone. She's a retired nurse. Sometimes you wouldn't even think that she's a sanitary labourer because she sweeps and she picks up garbage in the drains, in the road, and she's proud of doing it. Okay? She did very well as a councillor. She served for two terms and she also served as chairman for these two terms. And I can tell you, she did very well. So I know you know whom I'm speaking about. She's none other than Mrs. Stella Scarryt Leblanc. Okay, Mrs. Leblanc, we present to you this recognition award. Okay, she's enjoying the moment. Okay, thank you very much.
Honorable Prime Minister, to start at the head table, I'd just like you to know that you got an order from our chairperson. But I'd also like to tell you that I am preparing and sending in my application to be the next president of Dominica. This, this is exactly what the Vekas people meant when they decided to elect me on the council. So I want to thank you for being here with us. And I want to thank also for your continued support to the constituency or more or less the Vekas and the decision to work for the betterment of the individual community members. I just want to assure you that we will be ready on behalf of the chairman and the other councillors to work with you. Thank you. Also, I also want to say thank you to Minister Roberts. Thank you. The first time I became a councillor, your mother gave me my credentials. And then there was a second time and now the third time, you are giving me the credentials. So thank you very much. I would also like to say thanks to all the other members of cabinet who are present, all the ministers, especially Senator Oscar George from our area, and also the permanent secretaries who are here, but before you, I don't want the rest of the head table to think that I forget them. So Pastor, so Pastor Lauren, thank you very much for your blessings and prayers. And Madame Justice of Peace, thank you very much. The other permanent secretaries, the local government commissioner, the DDO, she has been working very well to get us through the transition and we are very thankful for that. I want to say thanks also to all the community members here. When I did the house to house, some of you wanted me to go up for chairperson. I told you, no, I am going up in order to support the young chairperson because he did very well. So so far, so so far we achieved one thing already by our first meeting. Secondly, I told you all, look, I am concerned about our young men in the village. Our young ladies are not getting good young men that they can pair with. I am concerned about them and one way we can do that is to put gender equality in the council. We have four men contesting. Government may most likely nominate more women, accept more women nominees than men. So we are voting and ensuring that we are getting four men on the council. Three of us were elected and I deliberately nominated the other man. Now we have four men, four women, gender equality on the council. So that's item two. Now since you have promised to work with us, as a token of my gratitude, I have already informed past councillors, but I am again confirming at this meeting that I will donate two plots of land for two bus stops, one for the Mopaja area and one for Baltaza, which will also be utilized by the people of Amber and Pendleton. I am also saying as a token of my gratitude again, since the elderly people are going to be utilizing the kitchen and so on by the health center on the fifteen thousand five hundred square feet house lawn, I'm going to ensure it has at least a free foot walk, a free foot, free foot walk path all along the two roads that it's boning for their safety and security. So I thank you and we can work together in the name of God. So let us together thank God the most high for all that he has done for us. Thank you.